How is it?
I'm going to sign the rest of these vendor checks.
Okay, I'd like to follow this meeting in order. This is the.
I would like to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, so, vendor, yeah, Linda?
Yes.
Just in general, this can't fly. I mean, if you jump in five minutes before a meeting.
I know.
Okay, I appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
But, um, he's probably in COVID and just.
That's okay. We clearly put.
Dropped something off.
Clearly passed that first policy. Okay, we've, uh, Sony will vendor payroll checks.
I'm gonna have to turn the page from your office, Jim. I can't hear, I'm sorry. I don't know if the people can hear.
The minutes for the, uh, minutes for sign, uh, request for, uh, abatement on Milliken and sign up on, any problems with that? Okay, intent to cut on Fraser, Morrison, Fletcher, and Bateese.
I'll sign it off on that.
Okay, it's signed up on. Timber tax, do you have invoices for dinner and, uh, Morrison?
Did we all sign in two places?
I regret it, yes. I think I did. You may want to look.
Inventory form request for 2021, that's to get, just simply get forms. I wonder if it worked. Payment in lieu of tax form. Signed up on that. Uh, and we developed an agreement with the Humane Society. Any questions on any of that? And that's a good agreement to have. That helps the police department.
Was that in the packet of things that I haven't finished looking at, the Humane Society?
It's in my throat, probably.
It's something we do every year.
Oh, I have not finished looking at all those, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, okay, Board of Town Officials, um, I'd like to have a moment of silence for, um, the two deaths that occurred in town this week. One was Andy Chase, who used to work at the, uh, at the dump, and one was Chuck Robertson, so, last month, uh, who'd had a Volvo wreck in 25. Okay, and I'd like to thank the first responders, uh, police and fire department that helped out with those two unfortunate situations. The good news is the, uh, for town spirit, Farmers Market got off to a rainy start in July. It was about eighty percent filled with vendors. Uh, there was a good turnout from the town. We had overcore parking and whatever to the town, uh, the Old Town Hall. People, uh, either wore masks or socially, uh, distanced appropriately. Chief Trot was there to, uh, uh, just keep everything in order, and the, uh, the Johns were there. Which sounds.
Oh, the, um.
Pies, yeah. Uh, the FEMA COVID grant was approved, and Linda's gonna go into that deep, uh, in detail, more detailed later. Uh, on the town common, we had some dead trees, um, and some of the branches had fallen. It was basically a liability risk for the town. We had some, uh, tree trimming being done at a separate site. Uh, I realized we had a problem with the dead wood and the trees, and I engaged the, uh, Mike Clark, who was doing tree trimming there, had all his equipment on the common, uh, for another job, and he agreed to, uh, go and trim all the trees, uh, on the town common. So he did that. It took him about three, three and a half hours to do it. Uh, he didn't have to move all his new equipment. And, um, that's gonna come out of the Parks and Recreation budget.
Would you lay a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, uh, approve that expenditure from, from now? I don't know how much it's gonna be, but.
That's $400. Okay. His, his price was asking for.
Right, no, I just, I, I just think we should have something in the record approving that particular expenditure, that, because that wasn't brought up before.
No, it was, it was a target of opportunity.
So I just think we should, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Agreed with you, and I forget what the word is.
I just made a motion.
I made a motion that we support the, uh, chairman in making that decision for the goods of town.
As I command.
To, to have the tree work done at that time.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
And, uh, the other thing, as I walked around the common, one of the trees that we trimmed out of dead tr- uh, dead stuff had a lot of branches that were coming over the, um, uh, gazebo. And so it was about a ton. As we moved on and he went through the tree trimming, there's also a tree foddered down, and Paul, you're aware of that. It's around a large, um, rock maple who's roied on one side. It's roided on the northeast side of the tree. Unfortunately, the weight of the tree is carrying towards the gazebo, so it's not an emergent thing, but it's something that we should be aware of. Because, you know, I don't, it could come down at some point. So, not trying to be an alarmist or, but just, we should, we should be aware of it. Paul, do you have any strong feelings on that?
No, um, I did go and look at it after you made me aware of it, and, uh, once we get through some of this construction work and stuff, um, I am going to call Mike Clark, because there's a couple trees on our road, one on Buffalo Road, that one, uh, that should be taken down, and I am also gonna get some, um, prices on trimming some trees on a couple of our road, well, probably only one of our roads with the money I have. That needs to be done.
But I've walked by that tree several times during my rehabilitation.
Yeah.
I've noticed that that, that tree is, is an issue.
I didn't see it until I got my butt out there, and I just said, oh, this is, you know, we gotta pay attention to this.
But it's a good source of firewood for some, for somebody. It's, you know, that sugar maple, that's, that rotten maple is.
Yeah, no, it is. Any update? Well, I've got Jeff and Andrew here. Broadband communication, any updates?
Uh, broadband, um, I've reached out to Consolidated, um, haven't made any type of progress with them as of yet. I have an actual problem trying to lock something down. I, uh, I did talk to Chief Trot over the last few days. Um, he was gonna help, uh, get another contact. I'm not sure if you had any before you got a contact.
Yeah, I do, I'm gonna, that's what I'm trying to.
I still, yeah, I still need to get that. Um, the prob- I also did contact the, um, the Office of Strategic Initiatives back, the state.
Yes.
They're not budgeting at all on that, um, that deadline earlier this month. Um, they're just not budgeting at all. It's just, honestly, it's almost like I'm talking to like an automated phone agent or something like that. They're sending back very, very generic emails. So, um, I don't know what kind of headway I'm getting.
They may know, but they're in store still.
Yeah, but as of right now, they're still, they're just reiterating the fact that the, the deadline for RFPs was July 2nd. I mean, I'm still gonna try to work with, uh, Consolidated and, you know, obviously the Spectrum contact as well. It, we don't, we'll get the money somehow, uh, whether it's through like federal or other state grants or something like that. Um, it just, if, I don't know, it may not end up being this, uh, emergency, um, CARES Act funded.
Okay.
That, that, that's, that's my, that's my idea.
So who, who are you contacting at the state?
Um, the contact at the state, give me one quick sec. Her name is, uh, Lisa Cotor-Robos.
Okay, who, okay.
She's a, she's the director, um, she's a deputy director at the New Hampshire Office of Strategic Initiatives.
Okay, um, this, uh, just to fellow board members, do you think it's worth me approaching, um, Obackin as the?
Oh, uh, Executive Counsel Ryan.
Ryan was on this, uh, I don't wanna go to, go to the well too much.
There should never be any problem on going to those wells too much. If I'm gonna offer another, I got a couple of questions to ask, but go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. No, go, go to the high school, that's his job, that's part of his job.
I don't wanna make him that phone call. Andrew, if you can give me, you know, just an email form, who are you talking with? What you talked about, you know, just the title of the grant, and I'll try and get his phone number, and once I get everything you, I'll call him, and I'll just say, hey, look, this is kinda what we're trying to do. How can you help us?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I did wanna make one other thing, and this is in regards to the, um, the, the livestream. I did speak with, uh, Andrew over at, uh, Penitenter TV, and, um, I mean, I, I apologize to Francis, uh, but he's not here. He was absolutely right on the, the sound being way too low, but I, I never heard very specifics on that. Andrew over at Penitenter TV indicated that when I sent him the video, the fact that you folks are si- sitting over there, and I have the folks over here, it's not picking, it, it sounds fine on a YouTube video, but on the TV.
Yeah.
It's different. So what I'm looking into right now, um, is possibly some wireless microphones I could put in front of you folks, and maybe a different microphone for whoever's talking in the audience, and, uh, we can record it that way. But I'm looking into that, so if anybody's, you know, still having issues with the, the TV recordings.
Okay, so I, I just think broadband is critical with what's coming up for education in the fall. Because right now, if we go to any component of virtual education, we're not able to do that for the students in this town right now because of the way the communication systems are. So it's, it's critical to this town. It's critical to developing the town too. So that's why I, you know, I, I feel like we should pursue this. I think you're, you're doing a good job, and I just wanna reinforce it, um, but I don't wanna be pissing and moaning to people too much, you know?
Yeah, I, I think if, if, you know, if we can't make any type of, uh, headway with, um, the OSI in the state, uh, then maybe I just continue down the route of trying to look at federal grant money. Um, I'll continue to talk to.
What's OSI stand for?
Um, the Office of Str- uh, Strategic Initiatives.
Okay, I got it.
So, uh, it, I mean, again, there's other grants through, uh, the USDA. Um, I'll talk to Chesterfield. Chesterfield is basically doing the same thing.
Yeah.
That we kinda wanted, um, that I talked about in, in the beginning, yeah. So I'll, uh, I'll start maybe going down both routes at the same time.
Okay, kinda following up on that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Jim. How much notice did we have that July 2nd was gonna be the drop date?
Two weeks.
Okay, two weeks. That, that, that is so unfair.
Absolutely unfair.
Okay, so that needs to be brought to someone's attention. So, having said that, my, so there is, I got two other questions. There is some federal involvement in this, right?
Absolutely. They, they, yeah, the, the money coming from the state is ultimately federal, uh, CARES Act.
There's a federal, broadband, Mr. Chairman, there is a federal component to this. We should be contacting Congresswoman Annie Custer. We should be contacting her office. I mean, she's our federal representative, and it is an election year. And we probably should also be contacting Senator Jean Chihin. It's an election year. So, having said that, my last question is, and this is what makes me nervous about all this stuff, is, because I'm not a, I'm not a technical person, as we all know. Is this broadband?
I'm not either.
Is this broadband stuff have anything to do with this 5G stuff I'm hearing about?
Absolutely not.
Okay, excellent.
Um, one's, one's wireless. 5G is a completely wireless cellular network. And, um, this broadband build-out is more physical infrastructure.
Because I'm not in favor of 5G, but I just didn't know, you know? This allows, this kind of grant here allows us to have the infrastructure, that's building the roads so that we can get, you know, it's building the roads of communication. No, I have no problem with that, Mr. Chairman. No, I'm, I'm in favor of that, okay? But, again, take advantage of our elected officials who have staff in, in place to, to deal with constituent concerns and issues. And if they're not gonna deal with it, then in my opinion, they're not doing their job.
Well, uh, maybe I'll, maybe I'll try to lean a little bit more on, uh, Beth Folsom, and I, I can look at folks and.
Andrew, I, I'd like to make a motion that this board gives you backing and any phone calls to Custer and Chihin to get those answers. I second that motion. I vote yes. Yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
When did you get that vote?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the option.
Okay, okay. I made a motion that select the word, support Andrew Lassert in his, uh, in approaching Annie Custer and, uh, Senator Chihin, uh, to get support for the broadband. Okay, that was a three to zero vote.
And Omar Agarwal seconded that motion, yeah.
I think there was a reason there for me to say that.
Some, some pork, man.
I'm sorry, Chief.
I started with modest stipends today.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we're, Andrew, you're doing a good job. Keep it up, and I, and you, what I'm trying to do is, you've got our support.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
Yeah, um, East Side Bridge, uh, has got some wear and tear to it, well brought to our attention. New Hampshire DOT is, uh, overextended during the, um, COVID crisis, but Chris Fournier has agreed to come over and take a look at the bridge. It's gonna be Thursday at eight AM. If I'm gonna go to it, but if any of you wanna come too, then you gotta make a, a formal.
I did, Joy posted it several years ago.
Yeah, I'm planning on going to that, Mr. Chairman.
I hear that.
You said Thursday at eight?
Thursday at eight.
Yep.
I can do that for an hour.
I just wanna let you know the Highway Department is paying out of our bridge fund for this, because Chris has to charge us. I looked around, had a few people who made some phone calls, and everybody said that you gotta get an engineer to look at the concrete, so.
Okay.
I figured Chris was our best bet, so that's why I ended up calling him about it.
Yeah, we've got a good relationship, they seem to be reasonable.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman, and I don't mean to show too much of my geographical ignorance. Where exactly is this bridge? Can you, can you give me a little diagram as to?
Yep, if you go, uh, up East Side Road, go past King Lumber.
Okay, hold on. Okay, East Side Road, I know where the King, I know, I know locations. I'm, I'm not good with those other, so, East, okay, I know where the King Lumber Company is.
And when you go up the hill, just, uh, bear, uh, left on, uh, East Side Road, you'll follow that, you'll see our cars there, you can't miss it. It's almost, it's almost at the intersection on East Side and Red Oak.
Red Oak, it's ready, okay, almost in the, yeah, just before you walk Red Oak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight o'clock.
Yep.
Okay, um, update on the Veterans Memorial, um, they are trying to do a fundraising dinner, uh, once a year. This year, because of the COVID, um, uh, virus, they're gonna do a, we are gonna do a fundraising dinner, a barbecue. Same people as last year, and, uh, instead of having a dinner on the bridge, it's gonna be taped out of the bridge, so. So we're gonna put, uh, tables out around the Historic Center and the Town Common and stuff, so everybody's kinda spread out. But the barbecue will be at the base of the bridge, so you come in and get your barbecue and, uh, you know, sit. We're gonna try and get the same kinda spacing we got with the Farmers Market. And, I forgot, last year, we didn't ask for, uh.
Yeah, we can set one, we'll, they.
Somebody pitched me out on that one.
We should set you up with a.
I was, I was the one that brought it up.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she took advantage of it.
Yeah.
She said, you know, you can't do that.
So, yeah, I'll get you a permit for that, that's fine.
Thank God, okay.
Just tell me when.
She probably, she probably made a more petition than I was.
I, oh, yeah, she handed up.
Mr. Chairman, you probably had, you probably had backup and permission from higher, off the, off the, off the chain of command that you didn't know about.
Yeah, that I didn't know about. Um, also, uh, every Thursday from two to four in this office is signup for the Veterans Memorial. So if you're a vet, you come in, um, you know, all the computer, especially the people who are on, uh, computer literate, she'll sit down and help you guide you through.
It's Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday. Why? Did I do it?
Last year was Wednesday, and last week was Wednesday.
Last week it was Wednesday, she told me it was gonna be Thursday from two to four. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay. Um, okay, that's this, okay. Chief Trotz. Is not here.
Yes, did, he is not able to sign into the Zoom meeting either, so he asked if you would just read his report out loud.
I got it. Okay, uh, this is a summary of notable activity conducted by the Woodworth Police Department. It does not reflect all of the Woodworth Police Department's activities during the time. Okay, continues to take part in scheduled conference calls during the week regarding updates concerning COVID, as well as law enforcement updates calls. Unfortunately, these calls, uh, fortunately, these, uh, calls have lessened significantly over the last couple of weeks, but still remain a priority. Uh, they processed several concealed carry permits over, uh, the last couple of weeks that were submitted and requested by Woodworth residents. They handled a motor vehicle complaint on Route 25 where somebody debris had come out of the back of a trailer and was left on Route 25. He located the debris and moved it to the side of the road, where it was later picked up by, uh, the Hampshire DOT. Chief Trot later, uh, took another motor vehicle complaint that reportedly was reckless enough where it almost caused a motor vehicle accident. With this incident, there were multiple people, witnesses, uh, who called in when it happened, and that matter is still under investigation and will be dealt with accordingly. July 1st, 2020, Grafton resident Joshua Championy, uh, date of birth, four eleven ninety, was arrested numerous warrants through the Cannon Police Department, as well as three arrest warrants from the Woodworth Police Department. The racetrack ran without incident on July 3rd. The races for Ju- on July 11th were canceled due to adverse weather conditions. Uh, that's his report, and it's digitally sent to women to be incorporated through the news. Chief Ames, you're.
Chief, may I make a, a comment? Point of privilege, I just wanna say for the record that, uh, I stand a hundred and fifty percent behind our police department. We are very fortunate to have such good, uh, men and women, uh, protecting our communities, and I commend Chief Trot and his staff, and the, and the Sheriff's Department, and the Deputy Sheriffs. We have Deputy Sheriff here in town, Peter Caricetti. Officer Eck was here this evening. I, I, I just wanna thank our law enforcement community for their excellent service protecting our community. I also wanna recognize our County Corrections Officers for the services that they do in, uh, up there at the Department of Corrections. We're very blessed. Also thank the, uh, first responders and the men and women that serve in our fire department. It's, it's a risky business out there these days, more risky. You know, we're not that far off the main interstate, and who knows what's, who's gonna be coming off the interstate, and, so I just wanna, I just really wanna show my support, a hundred and fifty percent for all of these good people that, that do this for our community. Thank you, again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chief Ames?
Sure. Um, we're gonna start off with training on July 2nd, which is our normal meeting night. Uh, we started another evolution of training. We trained with motor vehicle education, using all the rescue tools, uh, from Engine 2. Our new personnel were being trained on the tool setup, learning the starting and the operation of the tools. Everyone had a chance to learn the location, operation, and usage. This will continue onto the 15th, where we will be using a salvage car, uh, to train on, to include a patient in the vehicle. Uh, so we're in a mock accident, and that'll be tomorrow night. The next thing was calls for service. We, as everybody knows, we had a tractor trailer accident on 25, where the driver passed away on the scene. We were on the scene with the first two firefighters in about four minutes, a great time. And then about seven minutes after that, we were on scene with two of the rescue, engine rescuers. We had nine firefighters on the scene, all doing their part in this emergency. During the process, we were there from seven fifteen in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon, uh, starting out with, you know, doing an extraction, and then aiding in traffic control and cleanup. Shortly after that call, we were told to warrant for a water rescue, which the victim overturned his canoe and he ended up drowning. Fish and Game performed the recovery on that particular call. Sunday, we had a call into Runby for a tree across the road on Stinson Lake Road. Uh, Runby was tied up in a fire in Camden, so we were the next do-in pieces, so that's your mutual aid coming into play. Public relations wise, I met with Daisy Hope. She is a niece of the truck driver who passed away. She contacted me to discuss the accident, and she brought the fire department a nice thank you card, and she also wanted us to see the cross the family had made to put at the accident scene, so.
That's nice.
It's been busy.
Yeah. Guys are gonna fly out. Great work. Thank you. Paul, your next.
Uh, just for, oh, go ahead.
Do you want, uh, give, uh?
Yep.
I wanted to let you guys know that, uh, Caricetti called me yesterday.
I wanted to let you guys know that Carecetti called me yesterday, and the Fire Department has just said they're gonna be doing a mock, cutting a car open, I don't know what you wanna call it, uh, emergency, and they're doing it at the Highway Department, because it's a big enough lot, so I told them.
I was gonna ask you where that was.
I, I told, I told Pete, he's more than welcome to do it there. But I even told him I'd tell him where the key was, if they need to use a bathroom or anything, Chief Ames might have one of them. But we have been very busy. Uh, ditching, we've, we've done a lot of ditching, we've done Ellsworth Hill Road, we've done Turner Road. We have been battling this rain for about eight days now. Our roads have held up reasonably well, but we do have some washing out, and I'm at a point, I don't have much material in our roads. I know I've had some people call and ask, hey, I'm gonna have to do something with my budget this year. And put a very big dollar amount in there for gravel. We need, we need, I, I, you can ride up Cape Moonshine, Atwell Hill, Ellsworth Hill. There's great base material, but it's big material. I, I have nothing to scrape up anymore.
So the rea, just so I got it clear.
Yeah.
The reason for the material on the top is so you can crown them to get them all.
Correct, I, I get nothing to pull into a crown. I mean, it's, it's scarce right now. I mean.
Take a ride up and take a peek, you'll see exactly what I mean.
Uh, but other than that, I mean, our, our roads have really held up reasonably well. I do have to get up to Fraser Road, that road is in.
Where's Fraser Road?
Uh, all the way at the top of the North Dorchester line, go past North Dorchester, the Dorchester Town Line. Then it's the next road on the right, which I can't remember the name of the road, and then it's the first rate, and there's a lot of gravel that's washed out of there. I mean, it's, it's barely a one lane road. It's, I gotta get up there with the ore breaking, do something tomorrow, hopefully, if I can. We have, already paving came and did all the reclaiming on East Side Road, and they did all Red Oak Hill.
What did they do with the reclaimed material?
Oh, it's just lays back down on the road. It just, it just, it grinds it up into small pieces, like three inch pieces, and then they grade it and they compact it and just leave it.
And then they pave over.
Well, they'll come back, they're not happy here tomorrow. Thursday, they will be back to do the fine grading. Tomorrow, we have to haul two hundred and fifty yards of gravel up to Red Oak Hill on the top half section because there's not enough gravel up there to shake the road correctly.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, we're gonna haul as much gravel, gravel as we need up there tomorrow. I'm estimating about two hundred and fifty, maybe three hundred yards.
Is there, is there a better quality gravel that'll stay on the road better, or is it just the steepness of our town?
For the gravel roads?
Yeah.
Well, it's. It's a matter of.
It's an innocent question.
No, I know, and I'm, I'm gonna try to answer it the best I can. I don't think much gravel has been put on our roads for a lot of years. I, I, I think people have done a little bit here, and a little bit there, a little bit here, you know, just to keep, keep the roads in halfway decent shape.
Yeah.
And as you know, thirty thousand dollars a year, it doesn't go very far. I think I told you, I'm gonna do a mile and a half of road and it's gonna cost twenty eight thousand dollars in gravel, so. But, but one of our main points, like, I'm gonna use Nichols Hill as an example.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we went up and we did a lot of ditching work up there this year that needed to be done, and we put, I can't even remember how much gravel we put on the road. Hundred and fifty yards, maybe two hundred yards, I'm not positive, on the steep hill part, and after we were done and packed in, I put the magnesium on that road. You had asked for it, another guy, like, don't even know his name, said it was really dusty. I put it on the whole road. And as much rain as we've gotten over the last week or week and a half.
Right.
I think you can attest what happens to the road when you put magnesium on it. It's packed so hard, it just runs off the road when there's a correct crown on it. And the ditches are full of water. I mean, this morning when I, when we were up there, the ditches, it looks like a brook.
Yeah, it, it does work. I just didn't know if, if there was too much sand in the gravel we were getting, or we need more.
So. When you just leave your gravel roads, gravel roads, you lose a minimum of ten percent and up to twenty five percent of your fines throughout the year. From dust and plowing and everything else, so. If you, if I put four inches of gravel on the road this year.
You're gonna lose an inch.
I'm gonna lose an inch until next year, so it's, it's, it's one of those things that it's.
Well, I think, you know, that's something we gotta bring to everybody's attention in town, hang on, because if you're gonna jump the budget at the next town meeting, it's, it's good for everybody to realize why.
I mean, I, I'm probably gonna, I'm not gonna have any paving work next year or anything, we're not gonna have the money for it. We're gonna concentrate on graveling some roads, and I'm, I'm honestly thinking, I'm gonna put a big number on there. I mean, I, I'm sure it will, it might get beat down if it's okay, but like I said.
If people understand purpose and its plan, that's a lot easier than just a, a number.
Uh, just as a suggestion perhaps, maybe we should look into doing a capital improvement expendable program at town meeting to stop putting money aside into that capital reserve for gravel, specifically for gravel. Because you hit the town with big dollar items and the tax bills are gonna go boom, but if you weed this in over time, it might be another way.
Right.
So through cap, okay.
Through a capital reserve, but you would want.
I'm not familiar with that, so just.
So a capital reserve would be where the town would vote to put X amount of money each year. As long as it's on the article to do so, they put a little aside each year, like I do for fire trucks and, you know, fire stations and that type of thing. So it's, it's another avenue to take with a lesser hit, I think, you know, on the tax bill.
Try to keep your taxes kind of level over the course of time.
That's a good idea. I know, I see what you're doing. That's a good idea. And who manages that?
That would be through the trustees. Yeah.
That's a good thought.
Do you have any money, is there any money in the trust funds, the town trust funds for something like that?
Not for gravel.
Excuse me?
Not for gravel. But don't forget that if, if you're going to introduce a fund like that, it's gonna take a few years before you use it. You know, and that might defeat the purpose if you need this right away.
So just to give you an idea, I'm gonna use this for.
Hey, we just posed this around.
Yeah. This year I had forty thousand dollars in the budget for gravel, okay, and I'm, I think I'm down at, my number's around thirty two or thirty three thousand right now. I'm gonna use about twenty eight thousand down Atwell Hill. That's not gonna leave me a lot of money in gravel for the rest of the year. That's a mile and a half of road I'm gonna do. So I'm thinking, if I can, if I'm not gonna be doing construction, like, if the bridges don't need work, that's ten thousand dollars maybe that I can move around. But I'm saying I would like to see sixty thousand dollars in our gravel budget next year, and that's at a minimum. And I, and I'm more than willing, and I'm already working on the budget, I'm already, I've already got a, I've already got a budget, and I've got a capital improvement plan that I'm working on. And once things slow down in September, I'll probably get it finished up. But just throwing numbers out, I mean, right now, from what I've, I try to keep my budget going throughout the year when I use stuff and see stuff, so as of right now. I don't see my budget going up next year more than maybe twenty or twenty five thousand dollars. And that's adding an extra thirty thousand dollars in gravel. That's, that's just what I've been plugging around.
Well, let's just see how it develops, and at the end we're gonna decide.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I don't mean to be a broken record. We have, from what I've been told, and I, I've asked for some information about this for the benefit of the board. We have a town gravel pit. Access is a problem, from what I understand, but I'm told there's millions of feet of gravel out there. I forget what the term is. But there's, there's a lot and lot of gravel out there. It's just a matter, from what I understand, is accessing it because the river has eroded the way into that gravel pit that the town owns. It may be if we look into this properly, maybe there's an investment in a road that would then open up. Maybe, but it, it may take some investigation on someone's part to, if, if we can open up mil, you know, a million feet of gravel. Then the money that we're spending on gravel could be, we, we've already got it. It's a town resource. We've got several resources in town. And I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure we had done our due diligence in identifying that. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Is this, is this now my, um, no, I don't know.
Yeah, Musillo.
Musillo.
Yup, and this was discussed earlier this spring, and I do believe that Palmer Calm, you guys talked about it, and you told Palmer, he was allowing, and you said, Palmer, it's on you if you wanna do it. Cause I did the research.
Right.
Linda got the email.
Right.
And I was told it was gonna be a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to get permitting to have it surveyed.
Oh, right, cause as soon as you're on the Baker River.
Just to get permitting, just to have it surveyed, to get permitting, that's the start of it.
I, I, I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I, I, I just can't believe that because that was a roadway for access to that gravel pit.
But the river changed.
The river changed.
I know, but I have seen the Department of Environmental Services allow the courses of some of these waterways to be put back. In a lot simpler, you know, it's a matter of exercising our rights. And again, this is where an executive counselor who knows what he's doing should be able to help the town out. I know private landowners who have had waterways shipped onto their land, and in one instance, it was a Christmas tree plantation that was gonna be destroyed. And they made all kinds of claims that it was gonna take, you have to do this, you have to do this, you couldn't leave the waterway, you can't, you gotta leave it where it is now. When that particular executive counselor talked to the powers in the state, within two weeks, that waterway was back in its original course.
Yeah, I, my experience, I'm, you know, I've got a good sized boat that comes from our property. I'm gonna do logging on both sides of it, and it's a question for you, Jordan. I, I've only had difficulty dealing with the EPA and getting those grants and the cost of it for even a bridge or something like that. What's your experience?
I need to go look. I haven't driven down there to actually look at it yet.
Yeah.
Um, I know that DES is difficult.
Yeah.
I think it's definitely something we shouldn't be looking into, and I don't mind making some of those calls, and I think we should, I think it's something we should keep on the old business. That's on the agenda each week that we should be looking into and see if there is a cheaper way. And then if there was something that could be done, we could put it up on a warrant article at town meetings, take the risk, raise the money to see if you could.
Cause I don't, I don't think the, the town is in business processing gravel, but we could sell the gravel to somebody that can process it.
You could sell it, you could even sell the property, you know, someone to put that in town.
Well, that's what I was suggested last year. I said, if we were to be able to access that gravel pit. Then you have raw gravel, and then you have to crush it.
Right, you gotta.
And, and make it, you know, inch and a half gravel or three inch gravel, which is fine. I mean, it costs about six dollars a yard to have somebody come in and crush it. But if you were able to say to, I'm just gonna use Warrens End of Gravel, say, listen, we'll give you sixty thousand yards of raw gravel if you crush twenty thousand yards of gravel for us. You know, that's where the town is in. I agree with the gravel pit, like, I, I think if you could get some sort of access, but you need a crusher, it's a million dollars just for a crusher.
I know.
And, and, you know, an excavator's three hundred thousand dollars, and then you need the trucks to haul it out. I mean, I'm just saying, that's why you'd have to go to a third party to say, we'll give you a hundred thousand yards of gravel and you make us twenty or twenty five.
So this has been discussed in the past?
It's been discussed several times.
So the answer, Palmer was in charge of this?
No, to, to, Mr. Mr. Chairman, to my knowledge, to my knowledge, and I'm in my second year as a selectman, maybe it was discussed on other boards. To my knowledge, there hasn't been the depth of discussion on this issue that, that I'm hearing. I'm not sure that I saw that email, maybe I didn't, I don't remember.
I don't remember them discussing, ever just.
We discussed it several times last year, and we discussed it just this last spring. There was this discussion, I think Linda probably has a minute to the meeting where Palmer said that he would make phone calls. Cause I made the phone calls for like a week and a half, and I finally got ahold of, I can't even remember her name now, and she sent an email to Linda and myself explaining what was going on, and the biggest problem we have is the gravel pit has not been open for fifteen or twenty years. If it was three years ago, we'd probably have absolutely zero problem, if nobody's, nobody's.
Probably need some logging to get to the gravel.
Well, I don't think you'd have to do much logging, but where you drive in, it used to go right across, okay? Now there's a forty foot gap in the river running through there. So you gotta build a bridge, quick use over it, because it's, it's literally a river now because it doesn't go out around it anymore.
Yeah, you probably.
So it went right through and nobody did anything to. At the time when it happened, if somebody would have got, you know, had the momentum and gone right to it, the state probably would like to put equipment in the river and build it back up. But twenty years later or fifteen years later.
Okay, I'm just trying to, Jordan, if Jordan, you're gonna take the initiative from some initial phone calls, it might be worth a call to Palmer to see where he stands first, so we don't just repeat ourselves.
No, absolutely, I'm, I'm with you, I.
Can we find, you said you had an email?
Yes, I'll get that.
Send that to me?
I think it's from DES or EPA, I can't remember.
I, I remember the girl's name if I see it.
I can go back through mine too. So sure, uh, other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape. We do have a slight change in paving because of the weather.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have rain Friday afternoon. And I already talked to John King and Kevin Daughtry. They are going to pave King Forest Industries, that strip of road, Friday morning, first thing, because if they happen to get rain. They can't pave. You know, if they do Red Oak Hill and then it rains, then we're gonna end up with a pond there.
Right.
So they're gonna pave that Friday morning, first thing.
Pave King.
King Forest Industries, that four hundred foot strip of road, and then they will go off and start on Red Oak Hill. So that's the only change that we really have right now. Other than that, everything's going fairly smooth.
Okay, ca, so the capital reserve for gravel, I'm just writing myself some notes, and then what are you gonna call, what do you wanna call this task you're on?
Gravel pit.
Gravel pit, okay.
Gravel pit resurrection.
Linda, can we keep that on the old business part of the agenda, just so it's a reminder? Thank you.
Gravel pit resurrection.
That's possible.
That's just one suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, we did, we gotta have a set to him. Oh, yeah. Old business, Baker River Water Test Results. I looked at these results today. Here's a graph, or simply, this is the peaks. You can see this is Breezy Point here, this is Pointe here, you can see the father, you go down the river, how high are the deep hole right content? It tends to peak. Ray, Sand Hill Bridge, and that's down in Runney, and that would be right around a lot of the campground that are right along Route twenty five. But as far as the town of Woodworth, the town park in Hamilton and at Pages, their, their count is, it looks like about maybe thirty percent more than Breezy Point, Father River. And it's about twenty percent more than the town of Lawrence, so it's, it's not way out of the line. So that's the results of the road test.
Were they all in the acceptable range, or are some of them out of, or the dangers out there? Did we have some warnings posted this morning?
Yeah, down, I think the warnings were down in the area of recreational vehicle park, over on the, those parks down in.
Pointe.
So at the time of meeting, nobody should be swimming at a few of our places of work.
If we had the one, we got set, we got some project, I mean, some of the road at Silver Bridge. How about this one?
Excuse me. Ma'am? Only one person. Excuse me, ma'am? Only one person can talk at the time, okay?
We got the health officer involved, and, and she posted several signs in the area. Um, just warning, swim at your own risk. That was the highest point in Wentworth, which was three hundred and fifty, million parts, or parts per million, something like that.
Okay.
And that was, according to the health officer, she feels that it was due to taking a sample during the drought, before we had all this trouble. And it was like, con- you know, the water's pretty well concentrated during drought. And could also be far runoff if anybody has any animals in the area. But anyway, we're going to be discussing that in a non-public later tonight.
Right.
But there was one warning from the.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a letter from a town resident who's very familiar with the water testing over the years. And I, this is gonna be something in the non-public session as well.
That's fair. Okay. Um, Linda, you're up now for, um, your discussion of FEMA and the Gopher Grants and first responder stipends.
Yeah. Um, we, we paid out, okay, the government is offering three different, uh, grants, I guess. FEMA is paying seventy-five percent of any, um, COVID-related expenses, including extra police force, anything that we have in here that we need to put a Plexiglas thing in, um, an extra mailing that the town clerk had to do to inform people, new procedures, things like that. Um, FEMA is paying seventy-five percent of those expenses. And then another program, which covers the same kind of expenses, but it's through the state in the acronym, is Gopher. The Governor of Funds, uh, or something, I forget what it is.
Yeah.
Anyway, we have applied to Gopher. Um, I have not heard back from them yet. We just signed the agreements two weeks ago. And that'll take a while, but we have until September fifteenth to submit all of our expenses. Um, FEMA, I can do it anytime. That doesn't expire. Uh, we did, I did pay, in the paychecks, you saw.
We showed it, the stipend.
That all the stipends were paid and the overtime was paid and stuff. And, um, yep, the first responder stipends, I don't really have to do anything with that. We just sent that form in and we'll get reimbursed.
Okay.
So we're waiting on the Gopher. I have to submit to FEMA, and the first responders is pretty well, so, uh, it'll happen on its own.
Good. It's good work. I mean, we, we just gotta take advantage of all of these grants.
Right. Well, we have to encourage each department to, um, you know, if you need something in relation to COVID, spend the money now, and we can get reimbursed. Or if you've already spent, right.
As long as it's documented, if, if.
Yeah.
Any of the federal grants, as long as you document an expenditure and, and a reason, it'll cover.
Right. You know, if there's something that you need that's COVID-related, but, I mean, there really isn't a lot like here. Like I said, the tax clerk has, the town clerk has, um, who's gonna get piece of the Plexiglas, which is probably a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
The library had some expenses that she's already sent to me. It's only a few hundred dollars. But, I mean, to our town.
It's a big deal.
A few hundred is good.
Okay. Um, any comments?
Yeah, can I ask a question? The chief, have we, I mean, your, your crew, your staff, your, your people are out all over the place. Are, are any of your folks being tested, uh, to see if they've been exposed to anything?
At, at this point, no. And some of the reasoning behind that answer is we are privy to certain information. So if we're being asked to work with a patient that has the COVID, we know that ahead of time. Uh, we go in with, you know, a certain type of equipment. And then, at that point in time, we would decide, you know, should we test that person later on, after that call?
Do you wanna have everybody tested for a baseline?
Um, let me discuss that for.
I mean, I, it's not, I think that's a good, a good thing to do. Um, but you gotta, I mean, you gotta really run that by your group.
Yeah, I'll run that by the group tomorrow night, actually, and then we can get back to everybody. They'll send you an email or.
And I would say, and I'm not a doctor, but, I mean, let's say you've got thirty-five people in your, in your department. And if five of them wanna be tested, why not?
Right. Uh, I mean. Good idea.
I, I think it's better to be proactive. I mean, the results don't have to go out to the public.
Right.
But it's.
No, 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 they know, they keep.
Yeah, so I know HIPAA and all that other happy stuff. But, um, you know, look, I'm bombarded with stuff every day, because I'm involved with a private school over in Claremont, and I'm seeing all this information coming in from, uh, this CDC and, and WHO, but then I'm also seeing things from other organizations, other groups of doctors. And so, you know, you, you hear about this doctor down in Texas who is treating people within three days and.
And that's a, a great point, because one of the best successful treatment for COVID is early intervention. And the problem with the, um, the CDC mandates, is they're mandating quarantine, which is the opposite to what you should be doing. You, you need to find out who's got it, early intervention, and it's treatable.
Yes.
But if you let somebody wait for two to three weeks with this problem, then they're sick enough where they need an ICU. And the early intervention treatment does not work. Um, I just talked to a guy that just came back from Afghanistan and, uh, and Saudi Arabia and stuff, and he was in charge of the COVID program there. And he said, he got, he getting the, uh, Arab, Arab countries on board with early intervention has really dropped their rate. Iran, on the other hand, just goes with sequestration, and their, their rates are, are spiking. So internationally, it, it really backs up this early intervention program.
Yeah, so good for him to all discuss it tomorrow night at my meeting.
I'm just try, I'm not trying to jam shit at you. It's just, but what I'm saying is, you might wanna consider this.
Yeah.
Because if you, if it's, you're early in your intervention and you get nebulizer treatment, because COVID is an inflammatory disease of the lungs. If you let that inflammatory disease stiffen the lungs, so it can't fight that, you're gonna lose the ballgame. Whereas if you can, you know, like you sprain your elbow and you got a bruise there, you take an anti-inflammatory agent, it decreases the inflammation, you ice it, you treat the local problem, it heals much quicker. So it's a mindset that, uh, government officials don't have in Washington, but it's, it's very pragmatic. They're intellectually very smart, but practically sometimes say a different words or kind of.
Um, I'm not sure if everybody knows your background in the medical field as well, or, um, in town. I, I just wanted to, like, wondering if you wouldn't mind talking about that real quick.
I'm sorry. I'm an orthopedic surgeon by trade. Um, I've spent, um, twenty-three years in special operations, doing medical, uh, missions in support of special operations all over the world. Um, I've got a license to practice in every country in the world. And, um, I'm exposed to, uh, a lot of, uh, world issues.
I, I guess I wanted to make the point that I know, I know what you're talking about. I wanna make sure everybody else knows.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I knew what he was, I knew what.
I don't know if everybody else, because, because everybody, you know, there's a lot of keyboard warriors out there in the world, thinking they know everything, but.
Right.
I just wanna, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk, yeah.
Yeah, we'll discuss it at my meeting, then go through it.
Right. I'm, I'm just trying, because you're in an exposed group.
Yeah.
Figure it out. Attack it. Don't, don't procrastinate, okay?
Once you guys are done discussing this, I have something that I completely forgot to bring in front of you. So, and once you're done, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your service in the military and on many levels. Thank you. God bless you, sir.
So we have, like, a few Class Six roads in this town.
What kind of roads?
Class Six roads.
Class Six.
That are not maintained by the town, but are town roads. Um, and I would like to put these signs up at the beginning of our Class Six roads. Uh, one is at the top at Ellsworth, um, where the sharp corner is, goes to the right over to Nichols Hill.
Yeah.
The other one is at Camp Victory, basically. There's a Class Six road there. There's a Class Six road up at, uh, Nichols Hill. You've actually said in the past that you pull people out of there.
Yes.
There is also, uh, Class Six Road is Hooper Hill Road, and I would like to put these signs at the beginning of every Class Six road. I've got the RSA here for you, so you can read them. Um, thank you. Upon your approval, I'll order them. Um, I think it's important, especially seeing that people get stuck on these roads and cause damage to them.
Yes.
And, uh, I personally, if you put these signs up, you can hold them responsible for repairs to the road. Uh, and I think it's, uh, important for us to do that as a town, as a town.
Yep. We all get the same sign?
Obviously, it's not gonna say Hebrew. It's gonna say Wentworth.
Are they cheaper if it says Hebrew?
Uh, well, it might be, less letters.
I've seen these signs in, in many towns.
You can look at a Class Six road, so you.
I, I'm very much for that.
Well, I mean, basically, a lot of our Class Six roads are people's driveways. Yours is a driveway, basically.
Right.
Uh, there's two or three people up, and you can actually hold them mile. And I think it's, I'm not even saying that it's, you know, you're gonna, it's gonna cost thousands of dollars, but.
How many of these are you gonna put up?
Um, one, there'll be, one at each end of Hooper Hill, if that's okay.
Yeah.
There'll be one at each Class Six road on Ellsworth Hill.
Yeah.
And there will be one on Nichols Hill, um, that goes over to Ellsworth, that Class Six. So I, I need five total. Yes?
Two things, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I would like to see one large word at the beginning of this, just to catch somebody's attention when they're driving.
Warning?
Something. Something to really seriously catch a serious.
I'm finding it.
What's this risk thing up here?
Well, that's a sign. I took a picture of that, so you guys could see it, because I can't find them online.
Yeah.
Uh, so that picture is actually, um, it's another sign.
Pass it at your own risk, must say pass at your own risk.
Probably. That's probably what it says.
But I, I would, and I, I know, because we're talking about, uh, signs through the Baker River Watershed Association about telling people not to build rock dams in the river. And that's a thousand-dollar.
Yeah, that's.
Fine. And that should catch people's attention. So something to do that. The other thing is, this is a point of information, if you're gonna pull out RSA.
Yeah.
Pull it directly from the NHRSAs. Don't use these other outfits.
Okay, I, it's, this says the same thing on.
I know, but, but this is.
I just giving that to you, so you know what, what RSA was.
Okay, but, but you should pull out the quote from the direct New Hampshire General Court. No, not, no, the RSA, that is using to back it up.
Oh.
That should come from the, uh, New Hampshire.
Okay.
This, th- these outfits may be fine, but, uh, if, there may be something that's not quite right. And so if you quote right from the General Court RSA or from the, uh, RSA booklet, which I guess you people don't use paper anymore, so.
Okay.
So.
Jordan?
Yes, I, I, did you make a motion to that?
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm going to Jordan. Jordan believes this.
Yeah, I, I very much agree. We definitely need that, because most of the time, people don't know they're on a public way. So this is now, you're on notice that this is Class Six. If you knowingly damage the road, you will be held liable. Get a plate number, give it to the chief, and then we proceed. That's what it does that.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
I make the motion to read, get these signs.
Okay, that's great.
I set in the motion.
It'll be ordered tomorrow.
And if you get one more big word at the top.
I, I will. I'll get a, uh, I'll either put warning or, um, maybe I'll just get another sign up top that says, uh, something. I'll, I'll think about it.
You've got a couple more on.
Yeah, pass it on risk. There you go.
This is, this is very important. Thank you. Thank you.
And for the Hooper Hill stuff, too, you can take that out of the, the fund. We have a capital reserve fund for the emergency.
These, through the New Hampshire State Prison, these signs are very reasonable.
Oh, that's where they come from.
Yeah, that's where I buy all our signs and signposts.
Oh, I'll take it now.
Oh, he did notes.
Yeah. I, I. I, I vote yes.
Yes.
Did you make, uh, that back?
Oh, well, his.
Well, I'll take a set. I mean, you, you know, if you, I'll.
No, I, I was putting them off for you guys. I get.
I get a lot. Well, I'll take one of those, I'll take one of those two. Is that twenty-seven?
Forget it.
Thank you very much.
You're gonna travel to a church.
Yeah, I get a copy myself.
Okay.
That's it from me, thanks.
Okay. That took yourself, of course.
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, okay. Palmer, did Glenda Tomy's?
Yes, she.
Glenda Lee was here.
Okay. Okay. I saw pictures of what you guys did up there.
I, I did some repairs.
Yeah.
When I have, when I have an area, the road isn't washed out. The ditch lines are washing out, but it's not the road.
Okay.
And I really have to prioritize what I'm doing and what I'm doing it.
Right.
I have been up there, I, I have to look back on the dailies, at least four times this year digging out the catch bases.
Okay.
Um, it's just, the road is so steep up there. It comes around the corner.
Is it worth putting stone checks or something?
Either I have to put some check dams in there after we ditch it, um, or we really need to put fabric down and put riprap in there. We need to do something to slow the water down here.
Right.
Um, but I did go up, actually, I did not do it. John, John went up. Um, but the road is not washed out. That's the key, like, in my opinion.
What's the, the issue really? What's uphill?
Oh, it's, it's, it's water.
What's the steepness to it? Is it a seven percent grade or more?
I, I would say, I mean, are you guys familiar with where I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I'm gonna say it's at least a seven percent grade.
Okay, so.
What's that mean?
It's seven, if it's a se- is steepness.
It's seven inches of uphill per foot.
Per foot. So if, there's a formula from, uh, from the Hampshire DOT on check dams.
That's right.
Uh, for, my sense is it's probably every, every hundred feet for a slope that.
It's probably every fifty feet.
Okay. Um, I think if you can slow the water, that's gonna decrease your fill at catch basin.
The only problem with check dams though.
You gotta maintain.
Is the same thing that I have found on Red Oak Hill. They work great. But the sand builds up in front of them, and once the sand builds up in front of them, it goes up over the top.
And comes on the road.
And it goes out on the road, and that's what I'm trying, that's why I'm trying to keep the water in the ditch.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, they, they're, they're maintenance. A lot, they can be a lot, like today, I, you saw the pictures of after I dug it out, there's two things, sand on top of those catches.
Yeah, I know, the, um, the state workers, they hate using these check dams because of, of a maintenance. On Route twenty-five A, um, just where you come up towards where Cape Moonshine Road is. The, the state did a job there where they used, they riprapped the whole side of the road. Now, that's pretty damn expensive.
It is. That's what I was saying. That would be an option, obviously. That five or eight thousand dollars isn't in my budget this year. But I'm saying, but that's what it would cost to do from the top of the corner down to.
Because you have to buy mat.
We have to buy the fabric and the erosion stone.
And erosion stone's the most expensive stone.
It's like eighteen dollars a yard. I mean, it, it takes a lot of erosion stone to do that.
Are you saying that if you did something like that, we wouldn't have the washout that we have?
The reason your driveway washes out.
No, not the driveway. I'm not talking the driveway.
Okay.
I'm talking about how the chummy digger up on the top doesn't really work, and the water doesn't go where it's supposed to go, because it's, it's just goes anywhere and everywhere. And then this time, it, you know.
It filled the basins up. It jumped over the basins.
The basins, my basin, I'm not doing, I'm not cleaning it this time, because it's full of the sand that came down from up there.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that couldn't, that couldn't have been taken care of today. They didn't have time or something. So that's for.
They cleaned off the two basins?
No, honey, mine isn't done. It's all full of sand.
I got pictures of it.
Mine is full of sand. So I spoke to, to, uh, what's his name? Who was over there?
John.
John, yeah, I spoke to him, and he says, look, John, he, this is full of sand. He says, well, he couldn't do it. And, and I. And, and I, when, when he did that, uh, moving them around, I said, yeah. Because in front of the mailbox.
See, the ditches are supposed to not have material in them, it's supposed to run water, like a river, like a brook. That's the main, so when you put material in them, it washes them out. So, that's what I was saying, like, the more material you put in, that's why you get to put big stone in. You see all the big stone that's exposed right now? That's good.
Well, there's a lot of stone all over the road because of the washout on the side of the road. That's not good. And there's a lot of ditches that don't have anything in them because he didn't have enough dirt. He carried it, no, I don't know, this was a fast, I wanted a fast fix because I was scared for the mail lady because it washed away so badly in front of the mailbox that she, if she ever went in it, she wouldn't get out of it. So, that was why I was, I mean, that's.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Well, anyway.
Ma'am, we're trying to solve your problem. Ma'am?
Oh, yes.
You're here at a meeting.
I can't even hear you, you're soft or whatever.
Okay, I have pictures of the basin being, it's fixed. I mean, I can, I got pictures that I showed you of you.
The basin, the basin at my, my part of my driveway is not fixed, it's full of sand. And it's too much for me to move, I usually clean them.
Right.
But I'm getting too old to be doing it, and it's.
Yeah, we're all old.
Well, that doesn't matter, you're not out there digging the ditch. But anyway, I used to hang the kids up by their feet to help me with this.
Okay, but that's not gonna be, get us to the solution, so.
Too soft.
Okay, good.
Is there any opportunity on that hill instead of running the water down ditch? Is there any chance that you can get more runoff, even if we had to talk to people about getting permission to put water off the road? I haven't, I haven't seen it.
So, the biggest problem we have up there is, it wasn't graded correctly. So, you come around the corner, Jordan, like, you're coming downhill, the whole road tips this way. Okay, so you're going down, her house sits over here. So, all the water from up top and everything that runs on the road is not, doesn't have a crown on it or anything like this, so it sheds it, so all the water goes to one side.
Yeah.
And when it gets halfway down the hill, there's tire ruts in the pavement now from people driving in the same spot. And at some point, there must have been a patch put in right before her driveway that's higher than the rest of the road. So, all the water hits that and goes just like that.
Like a water bar.
It's not a water bar.
I mean, so it functions as a water.
It, it's exactly what it does, so eighty-five percent of the water goes toward the ditch, but the ditch has already got way too much water in it. And the other fifteen percent goes right into the driveway and washes the head of her driveway out. It's unfortunate, but there's really no fix to it unless the whole road's repaved.
So, there's no way on that, that ditch line that's carrying all that water? There's nowhere to just put a runoff to get rid of this?
No, because it bangs and goes up like that, it's very steep on that back side, so.
Why don't they have a covey, a covey, is it a covey?
Culvert.
Culvert line.
So.
Thank you.
I wish this town was a very, very rich town because the proper way to do it is to put two more culverts in, cross culverts, so it catches half of it at one spot, the other half at another spot, and shoots it across the road. More culverts, cross culverts you put in, the quicker it slows down the water. We've got three, three hundred and fifty feet of straight downhill water with the road pitched that way that this morning, the water was road level, it looked like a river running down through there.
So, it really, you need like two more culverts. And if you can't ditch it off to the side, go ahead.
That's what I'm talking about.
This is something that maybe could be put in the hazard mitigations plan. And then, possible grant money is utilized towards culverts. This has been going on for years, it's been there for twenty years that way. So, you know, for now, I think the fix is keep those catch basins cleaned up as much as possible. And then, through the hazard mitigations plan, you can, you know, perhaps get funding for culverts for that area.
When, we did the hazard mitigation plan.
That was, that was not in there.
I will have to call June Garneau.
Can we call June?
I will.
And see if we can jump this on.
I will do it all in my spare time.
I can send her.
I will, I will, I'll call her, I'll send her an email tonight.
Okay, so you have the action item in there.
But the road is, is just, I forgot, I forgot.
Glenda, we're, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna follow up. Robyn, she's gonna do some work.
Because June, June, when she was doing the hazard mitigation thing, I thought she was on top of all these needs and.
Well, this.
No, no, it, it's just, I think if we bring it up and she puts it in the plan, then we, we gotta potentially get grant money to do it.
Hundred percent correct.
Okay.
But this only happens when it rains like it did this morning.
Yeah, but it rains like, it rains like that.
I know it does, and that's unfortunate, but I'm saying, like, when we get a couple inches of rain over a couple days, it's, it's just rust. But when you get an inch and a half of rain in an hour.
Yeah, but Paul, it never, it really hasn't worked well for a month. Well, I've been there forty-three years, it's not worked well.
Glenda, we're, we're agreeing with you, you're looking for getting money to solve it.
So, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be something is, is checked frequently. I'm just gonna have to keep the catch basins open the best I can.
Yeah.
But when you have a river running down there, there's nothing you can do until it's not raining. That's the biggest problem.
And this, this was, this last rainstorm was a flood.
Right, so, there's a potential there to wash your road. And if that potential is there to wash your road, then through the hazard mitigations program, we might be able to get some funding.
I, I think June would be the person who knows how to pull the strings to get it happening. I, I was impressed with her as a manager.
I, I actually will try to call her or send her an email tonight.
Okay. So, Glenda?
Yes.
We're working right.
That's fine.
Glenda, what is your, what's your address? That's what I'm gonna need.
Six thirty-two.
I'm not gonna stop by, I just need to know what it is to give, to give to.
Sounds like a date.
June Garneau.
Who is? Six thirty-two, now Dodge Seru.
Okay.
But what were you telling me about a line thing, Paul? You said, oh, we need to do, what is, what were you saying? I, I didn't.
A line?
Yeah, you said something about, you said the word line, but I don't, I didn't understand what you were saying about that. And you said, we really need to do, when you said that, and I didn't understand at all what you were talking about. But it isn't just the water, you, my road is disappearing because it's so.
You mean what I said, like, I know you want, you can see all the big rocks now where the water washes it out?
Aye.
But I said, that's what you wanna see, because if we put dirt in there like you've asked, it's just gonna wash out.
Yeah, I know, I took a pause, I didn't know.
I don't remember saying anything about a line.
Yeah, you did, Paul.
Okay, turn off, that's good.
Excuse me?
We gotta move on with the meeting in a positive way, okay?
We're gonna, we're gonna look into it, Glenda.
Yeah?
Yes, we are.
That's good.
Okay, we're gonna go into a non-public now?
Okay.
What?
Do we do the open, the public comments?
Any public comments?
I think Derek wanted to just maybe set up a non-public.
Oh, okay.
I gotta go.
Excuse me?
I gotta go.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, take care, safe travels, all Jack.
Of course.
You're welcome, just.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, give me a call, I said, the doctor.
Oh, the doctor, you got doctor? Actually, I'll go call you.
Devin?
Yeah?
Do you, you guys are going into a non-public?
No, I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any, any public comments?
Regarding an issue that I discussed with you in a private meeting, I noticed you're really busy tonight.
Yeah.
I didn't have the ability to get in on this week's agenda. Can I set up a meeting in regards to that with you the next time you meet?
Sure. Yeah, but you gotta, whatever you, you're gonna do is gonna be in Reiki in the Thursday before so we can review it on the weekend.
Okay.
And then we'll go over.
All right.
Okay, now you've already, we already signed off on an agreement with you, right?
It was not what I told, spoke with in regards to, with Deborah. It was not worded the same way as I spoke with her, we made the agreement, you asked me to set that up with her.
Yeah.
And we did so, and it does not match what I, my ability and what I could. It wasn't worded right. And so, I would like to clear that up, but not tonight because it's, you guys seem to be quite busy and.
Okay.
I'd like to do it in a better setting.
But you'll get some, you'll get the form to, to Glenda, the town administrator.
Yes, I will hand what I.
Town administrator.
Well, I would like to propose.
Yep.
And we meet in two weeks.
We meet every two weeks. Thank you very much, good night.